We're going to call to order the Falls Township Planning Commission meeting for June 27th, 2023. Can we salute the flag, please?
Pardon me, just to the flag, the United States of America, and to the republic which sustains, one nation under God, indivisible, and eternal.
All right, Mr. Benning, you can pull the word, please. Ms. Lozchuk?
Present.
Mr. Coin?
No.
Oh, Paul, Mr. Hartzell?
Present.
Sorry about that. Mr. Henderson?
Here.
Mr. Benning's present. Mr. Haney?
Present.
All right, we'll move on to item number one, Air Liquide, 19 Steel Road, Marsville, PA 19067, TNP number 13 dash 047 dash 159, and 13 dash 047 dash 160, preliminary and final land development.
So we're near here, too. We're new here, too. This is our first time in this building. So I believe you go up today, have microphone there and speak.
Hello, I'm Mike Coyle, a civil engineer with Phantom Market Lynch, designer on this project. This Air Liquide projects, Air Liquide is a French company. They have facility on West Steel, Steel Road West, where they produce gases for the semiconductor industry. They have existing building on site. Zoom in here a little bit. I don't have a mouse, so. Bottom, there it is. Okay, got it. So on site here. I can pinch, right. Oh, I got you. Great, thank you. So they have an existing, two existing buildings, existing building one in the upper northeast corner of the building, which is a manufacturing, operations occur in that building one. They had administration office, administration building office in the front of that for their staff. And then they have a second manufacturer building in the lower left side of the southwest part of the parcel. Okay, and then what we're proposing is three buildings. In the front of the lot, we're proposing a new administration building. These are all one-story buildings, 14,000 square foot administration building to help alleviate some of the crowdedness of their existing administration building. A proposed parking lot in front of that for 40 spaces to accommodate the square footage of the administration building. To the, to the east of that, a proposed maintenance shop building, 6330 square feet. And it's also a command center for their trucks in and out, like a guard, guard post. And to the left of that, a maintenance area for lay down and cylinder, gas cylinder storage. In addition to that. I'm looking for a pan button. I can't find it. Anyway. Okay, so in the lower southeast corner of the site, there's a proposing us another proposed manufacturing building number four, similar, you know, operations that will occur in their existing building. Well, this will be a building that, you know, accessed by forklift truck, forklift trucks. And there's a drive proposed along that building to bring in delivery tractor trailers to a cylinder storing area. Let me go to the next page. All right, so we have a proposed, some proposed pads that go along with this development for cylinder storage down here in the lower center of the site, concrete pad for bulk gas tanks. They also have a couple pads, one here for cylinder storage and another one on the west side of the site here. As well as a proposed concrete pad, existing building two for a DCS operations. And in this pad here will be a modular building for silane production on this existing pad here. They're going to build that, build on top of that existing pad with a new concrete pad. So there's no additional impervious for that area. And then for stormwater management, we're proposing, there's an existing basin in this lower southwest corner of the, of the site. We need to, for this additional impervious, we're going to expand that basin to include this area up here, which was just a proposed, was an existing grass swale. We're just going to expand that to make one large infiltration basin to handle the runoff. And the stormwater will be controlled with new inlets and piping. Off this parking lot, we'll have a couple inlets in there. We're going to tie this proposed parking lot into their existing parking lot and then capture stormwater along the, the curb line. We're going to create a curb line along existing parking lot and then it will come around and discharge into the infiltration basin here. Also proposing trench drain along this maintenance pad to capture runoff off of this, off this pad. Similar in the lower right corner. Obviously, you can see I'm not good with, without a mouse. We got storm piping here running along the, the building, picking up the roof drains of this manufacturing building. And then off the pads here, and then a new, a new storm pipe running over to the infiltration basin. The existing basin currently just has one inflow from an existing inlet right in here. This basin has no outflow structure, no outflow pipes. It's purely infiltration. We are proposing to keep it that way, but to have an emergency spillway on the south side of the existing basin. And, you know, to size to handle the 100-year storm for the site. So that's basically the, the whole development. I'll take any questions or?
Could you, is the use going to be the same or are you going to introduce new products with the expansion?
It's going to be the same use, the same manufacturing of gases. I don't know if you want to, Bob, add anything to that? Yeah, yeah. You can speak to it a little better.
So I'm Bob Kerprich, Director of Operations for Air Liquide Specialty Gases, which includes the, the Morrisville site. We do many, many gases. The semiconductor industry uses lots of gases for the fabrication of computer chips. And what we do there is generally take industrial-grade gases and significantly purify them and put them in the package that, that they use them with. So the, the, the expansion that we're, why we're proposing this is because of the growth of semiconductor chips in the United States. The, the whole CHIPS Act is, is what's incenting many people to build fabs, fabrication plants in the United States. The Intels, Microns, TSMC, Samsung, those type of customers. So we need to expand our capacity, for one thing. But yes, there are many gases we do today and potentially there will be new gases, all falling within the same types of processes we do today. But, but yeah, it may be different mixtures type stuff, same gases, different mixture, that type, that type of stuff.
What's the expected job increase with the expansion?
The site, we have just under 100 employees. That includes all types of employees. Probably in the neighborhood of 20 to 35. It really, you know, it's going to be scaled over time depending on when, when the process is put in. So I can't give you exact year. In this industry is very slow to adopt. So when we build a new process, it'll take a year plus to qualify it. So then we'll, you know, and then it ramps up. So it'll be over several years. But in the neighborhood of that, that, you know, 20 to 35, I think is.
I have one more question open for the board. I noticed in your garage, you had an ERT response team. So does that team work locally with the local fire departments? And with that, I just noticed it was written in the.
Yes, yes, yeah. So we, we are a responding site. So we have our own subset of our employees who are trained to, to respond to the various types of potential emergencies. So we, so we have those facilities on site in a, but we're looking to make it a more permanent with that, with one of those buildings.
Nice, okay. Yeah, I know what the, kind of the ramp down the steel mill, their emergency response department isn't as what it once used to be. So now a lot of it's based on local volunteers between Falls Township and Fairless Hills and the surrounding areas. And a lot of times we have to call Trenton in just to do the expertise. But it's nice to have another emergency response team in the township that's capable of some of the things that we have along with Roman Haas and Bristol Township. Thank you. Board, any other questions?
I had some questions about the plan design, but nothing for materials. So I guess the, the plan is to consolidate these two lots. Are the lots consolidated yet?
I believe, no, I don't believe they're consolidated yet. I think they're still separate.
So if they're not consolidated, the plan shows a building over a property line, which.
That is correct, yeah.
Kind of makes it difficult for us, or for me, I'm not going to speak for the board. Makes it difficult for me to approve something that I know violates the zoning ordinance. It would have been nice if there was a lot consolidation plan included with this process that would have told us what was going on because the plan is severely lacking in notes regarding what's happening with that particular lot line. There are some building restriction lines that I see on the plan and I'm not really sure what they are. But the one where, there's one to the left side of the plan over by the high tension towers that appears to run directly into a building, which would make me believe that it also violates a setback line. But since there's not any zoning data on the plans, it's hard for us to interpret that.
Yeah, there's, there's a PICO easement on that side, 120 feet wide. It runs along New Ford Mill Road. And off of that PICO easement, there's also a railroad, what's labeled on the plan as a railroad easement, which is, it's an, it's an abandoned, there's no railroad or rail activity on the property. So.
Right around where your cursor was, where you see that FES2?
Yep.
Symbol, did you see the building restriction line there to?
Yep.
And it appears that that line runs directly into the building. So I'm not really sure if that also violates a setback?
We were, we were talking, you're going to, the railroad easement goes, wraps around this, the site and, and some conversations with Joe Jones. On the south side of the site, the, what the plan, what the survey was showing was a 30-foot offset or setback line from this railroad easement. And of course, the, the ordinance states 30 feet from the property line, not from the, from the railroad easement. So in speaking with Joe Jones, he said, you know, we, if we can just stay off the railroad easement and as long as we're 30 feet from the south property line and maintain a clearance of the tracks. That was, in his mind, an acceptable, you know, setback, which will need to be clarified on this plan because, you know, a lot better. On the west side, though, where you were mentioning, there's no existing track there for this railroad easement. So what we're proposing is to just stay, you know, we're definitely meeting our 30 feet from the property line, but staying off the PICO easement, which ends right around where this 19 contour is right here. And we're, we're about five or six feet off of that.
I think the actual question is more the, if you look at it, it does say building restriction line.
Right, that's what.
So what is that?
That's what the original survey shows. When we got the survey done, it showed a building restriction line, which is 30 feet off of the 25-foot railroad easement line.
But that's still a building restriction line and it's on the prints and it is confusing.
It is, yeah. We were trying, we had a title search done right before we submitted the drawings, you know, at the end of May. And we do need to dig into that piece of it to, you know, resolve, are we encroaching on a, is the railroad abandoned and therefore the easement not valid anymore? So wouldn't restrict our building limits or, you know, so there's some work there to do on that to determine.
Lot more research to do. Okay.
So if you could have extinguished the railroad easement, then there would be no reason that you couldn't build right up to the edge of the PICO easement?
Right, that, that's what we're, that's what we're proposing is if you have an abandoned railroad that isn't being used, is there really a need for an easement there and can we, can Air Liquide use that part of the property for, for development?
If the railroad easements were created in a subdivision, then everybody in the subdivision has the right to the railroad easement. So you'd have to technically expunge it somehow or remove it unless you would avoid it. And I agree with you that nobody's using it. I don't know if Air Liquide's using the tracks that are behind them or not. I know there are some rail companies in that area that are using the rails. So.
Yeah, Air Liquide doesn't have any plans to use the railroad. They, they don't currently use the railroad tracks. Perhaps, yeah, that, that can be worked out when, you know, when the lots are consolidated or, you know, in, in that process.
So if, if we were to entertain a motion, Mr. Chairman, for approval tonight, recommending approval, I would ask that the condition of the lock consolidation happen before the final approval and also that we verify that there aren't any existing zoning issues and have these building restriction lines clarified and, and zoning table put on here. So we understand that there aren't any zoning violations.
Got it. So basically what's, you're asking for is just the prelim to get it and get it developed and bring it up.
With those conditions, yes.
Okay. Any other questions from the board? Could you just go over the waivers you would like?
So the, the first waiver is to submit the application as a combined preliminary final. Application. The second waiver, request number two, was allowed to use a smaller than 15-inch diameter storm pipe, allowing a 12-inch pipe for a trench drain that is being used at the manufacturing building. Just because the trench drain has a smaller width than 15. And it's just, it would just be that one pipe. Plus, the, the smaller downspout pipes leading to the main trunk line would be a smaller eight-inch diameter HDP. The third waiver request is for, to allow less than 18 inches of cover over certain storm drains with, with them being, you know, reinforced concrete in those situations. We are using some elliptical pipe to try to cut, you know, increase the cover over some of the, it's a very flat site. So we're trying to, you know, at least get one foot of cover. So that's the third waiver request is to allow less than 18 inches.
Could you, could you tell us where that particular waiver request is located on the plan?
Yes. So less than 18 inches occurs through here, this, this trunk, this storm run from a lonely existing parking lot. And then underneath the slab is about 12 inches of cover. And then also.
Is there curbing proposed there?
There is curbing proposed right here, yeah.
And if you put an 18-inch curb in, how would you clear the pipe?
The pipe would need to be, would be more off, you know, would need to be offset from that curb. It is pretty tight there. So perhaps the, the inlets would need to be a little more off the curb to allow the pipe to clear the curb.
Put a bigger box in and move it away from the curb?
Exactly, yeah.
And will then the bell of the pipe be in the building envelope, or the, excuse me, the pavement subbase, I guess, then?
Yeah, we could, we could move the pipe closer to the building, under the sidewalk. There'll be a little, you know, slightly more cover as you go towards the building. So that's what I would propose.
I'm just, my only concern was that the bells or the pipe would be impacting the curb, the full depth of the curb. And that if it was traffic bearing, even though it's just a parking lot for cars and it's near the, where their cars, tires probably can't reach. But if they could move it to the, underneath the sidewalk, that might help it.
Right. I agree with that. The other shallow area was in front of the manufacturing building, shallow, shallow pipe cover.
I'm only concerned if it's in the traffic.
Traffic, yeah. This, this will be, you know, this, this cover right here, this 12-inch pipe connecting to the, this is the trench drain wrapping around the outside. So this will be probably about 12 inches of cover over this pipe.
That's, trench drain is fine.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Yep.
And then all other items in the Jones engineering letter, we will comply?
Yes, yeah.
Ms. Bree, do we get a traffic report review? How, how much?
I have no traffic study yet. I mean, we submitted it.
Or traffic comments, you mean, or traffic?
Uh, no, from, yeah, no, I had asked Chris Fazio if he could do it and I haven't gotten anything.
Okay.
And I heard it was on the agenda for tonight.
Just in general, how much increased truck, truck, truck traffic do you think there would be with this expansion?
Bob, you want to speak to?
Generally, we're, we're not talking about large quantities. We're not a high-volume manufacturing site. So we, we, our trucks go four times a week, but that's it. And, and two out to the west coast, two down Texas and Arizona. So you're talking maybe six to eight a week. So I mean, it's not like it's a high-volume manufacturing.
And what about?
Then there's common carriers that come in also.
Bringing material in for you to manufacture.
Yeah, yeah. So I'm going to guess we probably have four, five, six trucks a day.
Okay. So it's an industrial park, that's.
50% more than that then. So it's not high-volume manufacturing.
That's the increased volume you're going to have or is that, what's your current volume?
That's current. I would say, assume worst case 50% more than today. Right, so four, five a day, maybe you can go to seven, eight a day.
Okay.
And you all will comply with the fire marshal's letters as well?
Yes, I received that.
Any other questions from the board?
Now, is the fire marshal comment, is it requiring more information about the building, I mean, the building?
Correct.
Fire suppression and things like that, okay.
Yes, will comply, that you'll provide them with the sprinkler information, all the other fire life safety items.
I didn't see any comments about fire lanes from the fire marshal. I was wondering if you had any feedback on that.
Typically, it's the length, in your drawing typically you'll have it and they'll, they'll map out the typical length of a truck. The fire in the, in your area and the high hazard, I recommend you do it for a ladder truck. And typically, I'll do the quick look, but, but yeah, that's the turning radius and you have access more than one area to come in and they have access to the fire. So look at also, look at the fire hydrant and suppression. I believe that's Morrisville water supply. So we work with.
Steel mill, yes, Morrisville.
Water, yeah.
Morrisville.
Okay. And I, I saw the comment from the Bucks County planning about having a truck turn plan included with the set, yeah, a fire truck and.
And that would go more towards your trucks coming out to make sure they can get out correctly and as well in the, in the plot itself and the fire department have access getting around. Nice thing we want is when we got a fire in the middle and we can't get to it.
Right.
But typical, typical average is 46 to 51 feet. So if you go with a 53 tractor trailer, we could fit a fire truck in there. Granted, it's a little tougher when it's not a tiller truck, but it's definitely something to shoot for.
Okay. I saw, there was a comment in the Bucks County planning letter that mentioned providing new sidewalks and curbs along Steel Road West and.
That would typically be one of the waivers that you request.
Okay.
Yeah. Well, I think the curb exists.
Yeah.
There is existing curb, yeah?
Yeah, for the sidewalks, you had asked for the waiver.
Okay.
Yeah, Joe didn't, Doug, it's, that wasn't identified as a waiver request in your.
No, it wasn't. I just saw the, the planning commission, their comments today, this afternoon, so. No, it wasn't, I just saw the Planning Commission, their comments today, this afternoon, so...
Any other questions from the board?
No.
If that'll entertain a motion?
Okay. All right, I'll make a motion to recommend preliminary approval for land development of tax parcels 13047-159 and 13047-160, recommending the follow conditions that the applicant provide data to, to show that the proposed development does not violate any zoning ordinance, and that the applicant also consolidate the lots in conjunction with this process, and recommend waiver request for section 191-8B to allow the project, well, I would take that one back, not recommend waiver request 191-8B to allow the project to be considered preliminary final, to recommend waiver request 187-13B1 to allow minimum pipe size of 12 inches, and allow 8-inch DEP for roof drains, and recommend waiver request section 187-13B5 to allow less than 18-inch cover, however, the applicant will try and alleviate that particular waiver.
I'll second it.
Mr. Brainy, pull the board, please.
Ms. Lescheck?
Yes.
Mr. Hartzell?
Yes.
Mr. Henderson?
No.
Mr. Benizy, yes. Mr. Haney?
Yes.
I think, I think from what we're thinking is, it's going to be a good thing, we just need a couple more things to feel more comfortable in our assessment and full, so that's why we're waiting on the final, but if we get the things that Mr. Benny stated, I think we'll be in a good spot.
Okay, sounds good, all right, thank you.
Thank you. All right, item number two, approval of minutes for April 25th, 2023, I will make a motion to accept the minutes as printed.
Second.
On favor?
Aye.
Make a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Thank you, everyone.